I'll be in that house forever.
I do, I have a good new presentation, thank you.
I didn't know if you were doing, um, you sent the PDF and I was like, does she want to do this on PowerPoint?
No, I just, sometimes folks like to have a printout.
I don't know how she printed it for the council, so.
Oh, well.
Then they can get to see what's in my head when I'm.
Lacy will get your tech.
Yeah, actually, let me get Zach.
That's what we wanted to do, right? Is your, is your.
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, February fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty-two PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, February the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, five thirty-three PM. Roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Diveterio.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
At this time, I'm going to ask Pastor Ron Matthews to come up and lead us in our prayer.
I'll pray. Precious Father God, we thank you for your love, your kindness, your tender mercy. You touched us this morning with that unseen hand, or what, for us to see another bright, beautiful day. We ask you to be with us as we embark upon this meeting. We want to show thanks and give thanks to all the leadership of this council, the mayor, and the entire administration, all the people who are here gathered today tonight in order to embark upon this endeavor. This is our prayer. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. For our plefice allegiance, I ask that all veterans and active military please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, uh, next item on the agenda, could I get a motion to approve our minutes from our January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three meeting, please?
Submove.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Approval of our minutes for our January thirtieth, twenty twenty-three meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
I would like to make a motion at this time to make a, uh, we're blank.
Amendment.
Amendment into our, uh, agenda right now to go right into our resolutions and then come back for our presentation.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Resolution number one.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute, excuse me, a contract with change order totaling, excuse me, one million two hundred and eleven thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars with Ernest P. Bro Electrical LLC for replacement MITL and signage TW, excuse me, a partial B, C, D, and E at Hammond North Shore Regional Airport, David Laboue.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, last, uh, city council meeting, I came to you and asked you to approve, uh, the grant, acceptance of the grant from, uh, Louisiana Department of Transportation Aviation Section for this, uh, signage and, uh, lighting project. This is the first part of what will probably be three parts over the next, uh, three years or so. Uh, now we come back and we ask you to approve the contracts, uh, that we'll use that money for. And, uh, this first one is the actual, uh, electrical contractor who's going to do that work for us.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council? Pleasure of the council.
Second.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Resolution number two.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a work authorization for professional services with Michael Baker International in the amount of fifty-one thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars for airfield electrical improvements, phase one construction at the Hammond North Shore Airport, David Laboue.
Uh, even though it's worded, uh, a little bit differently, this is essentially the construction management contract with the design, uh, engineer for this project. Michael Baker is our consulting engineer. This project, uh, is included in our master services agreement with them, which we, which we, uh, executed, uh, three, three to four years ago and anticipating this project. And, uh, they actually designed the project itself, so they'll, we'll be paying them, uh, or actually the state will be paying them for their, uh, supervising, supervision of this project.
To be clear, all of this is paid for money that we have received.
One hundred percent covered.
Not city funds.
Right. Well, with, with one exception, there's a, there's a twenty, there's a twenty thousand dollar grant match. I want to be completely, uh, accurate on that. And that money was included in my budget at the beginning of the year to cover that.
Thank you.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure of the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you, David. Resolution number three.
A resolution to authorize the mayor to sign the intergovernmental agreement with Tangifahoa Parish Government for the following streets to be overlaid, College Drive, Rosale Lane, Tina Drive, MC Moore Road, Second Avenue, Carbon Road, South Magnolia Street, Cherry Street, Lever Street, Burton Street, Welsh Way, Oak Creek Terrace, and Magnolia Banks, Holly Drive, Ruby Oaks, Ruby Oak Court, and Pine Crest Drive. Lacey Landrum?
This is our annual contract that we receive from the parish where they handle the asphalt overlay of the streets listed. Um, you'll notice that several of them that we had prioritized did make the list this year. Um, we have a couple more that we're working our way into, but this is the total list. Um, it's a very simple agreement, just the one page, and then behind it is the details of where the start and finish is of each of those. On Rosalee Lane, that is the street that's next to Chick-fil-A. The city actually does not maintain that road, that is a parish road, um, that's maintained, but it's included in our contract just because it starts within the city limits and goes to the parish, so. Just avoid any confusion about who owns that road or maintains that road.
Any questions from anyone in the public? Any questions from anyone on the council?
When is this, uh, contract start as far as, uh, start to kind of finish on these? So what is it?
They may start early, it really is up to the contractor who wins the bid. This is not quite out for bid yet. So it is still in the process there, um, and it really depends on the contractor to kind of direct the work. It also depends on if there's other construction happening in that area. We have coordinated with that to try to minimize disruptions in traffic. Um, the other side of that coin is also anything around southeastern or other schools, we try to organize it around the school. Being in session or out.
Pretty much, though the bid hadn't even gone out yet, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's, yeah, got you, thank you. That's what I was kind of wondering, when it would be the earliest start of anything.
Right, right, you're still probably at least forty-five days out, probably sixty days before you see any movement.
Sounds good, thank you.
Any other questions? Pleasure of the council.
Makes motion approved.
Second.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Diveterio.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Thank you, Lacey.
Thank you.
Final adoption of ordinance is none. Okay, we can go back now to our presentation. Lois.
Good evening, council and administration.
Good evening.
My name is Joe Muir, I was the chairman of the Hammond Housing Committee. And tonight we are, uh, happy to have Lois Colston here. Uh, with Civics Group, she was, she's project manager and is a planning professional and seasoned program manager. She's, uh, she served as the pro, uh, senior planner on this assignment. And, uh, Lois supported all aspects of the building, of the project, including document review, the data analysis of the, of all the investments and drafting of the strategies. So it's my pleasure to, uh, have her here tonight. Lois and her team have been a pleasure to work with through this housing study, and she's here tonight to present the final presentation with recommendations going forward, if you guys will allow. Lois, come on up.
Uh, I had a strong team behind me, I have to say, uh, but thank you for having me here tonight. We're at the final presentation, I was here, uh, back in April, uh, last year, when we got started. Uh, now we're finally at the final report, I'm going to get to the good stuff, the recommendations, I know that's what everybody wants to talk about. Uh, but I made a mistake in one of the first presentations and didn't start with, uh, why are we here, what is this study for? Uh, so as you all know, uh, you created the housing committee back in twenty twenty through an ordinance. Uh, part of their mandate was to analyze, uh, the housing needs in Hammond, um, and this study is an outgrowth of that. The study was, uh, designed with three phases in mind, uh, in the first and second phase. Uh, we got, uh, we did some demographic research and, uh, looked at the current conditions, uh, throughout the city. We also assessed properties, oh, excuse me, thank you. Yeah, we also assessed properties, uh, in enhancement areas, and now we're at the, the last phase where we're going to talk about some recommendations. I, I also wanted to start off just restating the city goals as presented to us back in April. Uh, there's five of them here, uh, I'm not going to walk through all of them, but just know that it's heavy emphasis on housing needs in Hammond and blight remediation. Uh, and we'll, I'll, I'll touch back to those as we talk about the recommendations and how each of those are going to address this. Uh, I already discussed this in elements one and two, uh, data analysis and developing the enhancement areas. Uh, the enhancement areas were really something the housing committee wanted us to address. They, they asked us to, uh, strat, pick areas of the city, uh, to focus these efforts on, uh, to really have a strategy. Uh, and the mandate was to us, you know, find the areas that are challenged, but, um, that are, and that are in need of investment, um, but that also will, will see a big impact when you do make those investments. So what you see here are seven enhancement areas that were proposed in the summer. Uh, based on, uh, we did a, a scoring, a weighted scoring on different market conditions, and these are the seven areas that came out, kind of bubbled up on top to focus on. And what you'll, what you'll find as, as I go through, um, this presentation is like everything's building on top of each other. You have the city goals first, uh, asked to look at the enhan, or propose enhancement areas. Uh, and then we did a property assessment in the enhancement areas of the vacant lots and the blighted property. And that was to get us some real data on what these conditions are in the, in the enhancement areas. Uh, but I think you should generally consider that vacant properties and blighted and dilapidated properties are something that this committee wanted to address citywide. Um, it's just that we strategized and focused on the enhancement areas so we would have some actual real data to talk about. We couldn't do the whole city, we needed to focus on, um, strategic areas. Uh, there's a lot of information on this slide, uh, I'd like to just take, spend just a minute to explain what's happening here. So, like I said, we did a survey in the enhancement areas. Uh, we took the properties that we surveyed, the vacant and blighted properties, and we did an assessment to come out with the, the, the primary characteristics of these properties and said, okay, if these are the type of properties that we're, that we're seeing that are vacant and blighted, uh, they're falling into, if you, if you run them down through this flow chart from the top to the bottom, the properties end up in one of three buckets, or approaches to improvement is what you could call them. Uh, so eighty-seven properties, that number after conservation, uh, fall into a FEMA-designated floodway. Uh, those are going to be most appropriate when the time comes that the city may have, um, site control of those properties. Those would be great candidates for conservation. Um, and the recommendations will speak to what that looks like and some ideas for conservation. Uh, disposition and redevelopment properties, and then the third bucket of improvement incentives, these are very, uh, closely related. And the distinguishing factor is that disposition and redevelopment properties, that middle bucket at the bottom of the flow chart, those are properties that we would consider, uh, in city site control. Now, currently, the city does not have site control, but for this study, we considered like adjudicated properties would be good candidates for an approach that would, um, use strategies and, and the recommendations that would allow redevelopment and disposition by city, by the city or by one of the city's partners. And then the improvement incentives, you know, you might have noted, three hundred and twenty-eight properties. That's because the distinguishing property characteristic there is that it's got a private property, it's privately owned, and it's not, it's not adjudicated. Um, it may be blighted, but it's got a private property owner, it's hard to, you're not going to go take property from owners to do something with it. So instead, we'll talk about some recommendations about how you get those properties to, to be improved. Um, if they're vacant, how to get them back into market, um, and be income-producing. Um, and with that, I promised I would jump into recommendations right away. We, uh, in the report, uh, that the housing committee and the council members have already, it's a draft report. I imagine it'll eventually, when it's final, be available to the public. Um, there's over twenty recommendations that fall into these, uh, we've categorized them by these topic areas. Uh, but like I said, they all tie back to one of those property improvement approaches. So I'm going to talk about, um, regulatory and administrative governments, governance. Uh, we pulled out, like I said, there's over twenty recommendations, I'm going to go through just a few to highlight sort of what we're talking about. Um, for property, for regulatory and administrative governance, for the city to get site control of properties, there's a couple of tools that you can look into. It's not going to solve all of your blight problems and all of your vacant property problems, but it's nice to maybe have in your back pocket, uh, when the time comes for those really troublesome properties that you can't do anything with because you can't find the owner. Or it's adjudicated and it's, it, you're, you're maintaining it, but it's not, it's not doing anything, it's not produ, it doesn't have anybody living in it, and it's just adjudicated. And both of those cases, their state law does allow you all to pursue either blight lien foreclosure in certain circumstances and adjudicated property to quiet title. Uh, the other thing I'll mention about the recommendations is that these aren't, uh, necessarily prescriptive in every case. These two happen to be pretty prescriptive, it's, uh, I'm sure your city attorney can tell you, it's going to take a very, uh, specific ordinance and specific steps to take you through the legal process to be able to use these tools. But it's definitely something we think you should look into, so you have that available to you. Uh, and then code enforcement, um, is not as prescriptive, but I think that there is room for, you have a code enforcement department, they're working their tail off to keep track of all these properties that have, you know, code, uh, conditions that, uh, might require a code lien or a citation, I think is what y'all call it. Uh, I think looking into tidying up the, the policies and procedures, um, having them be consistent with the current, um, Uniform Development Code. Uh, for example, uh, the code does allow for, um, fines for certain cite, for certain code violations. But I don't believe that those are actually being utilized, so things like that, looking into how do we put that into action. It's probably, it needs to be written, it needs to be transparent, everybody needs to be treated the same. Um, the first step is looking at those policies and procedures, making them consistent with the code and moving forward. One of the other ways we categorized in this, like I said, all of these recommendations are going to tie back to the city's goals of trying to get more housing in the market, uh, and trying to, um, alleviate blight. Uh, so one of the areas, topic areas, that the committee wanted us to focus on was how do we get more affordable, single-family housing, uh, developed in Hammond? Um, and we looked, as we, as I said, assess properties in the enhancement areas, and you find a lot of these pocket blighted or pocket vacant properties, so this is called perfect potential for infill housing, right? Uh, but what's affordable infill housing, how do you get there? Um, the next three slides, this one and the next two, are going to repeat itself a little bit, and they seem very much, uh, they are very much related. It's all about potentially updating the zoning code and the zoning regulations and looking at where you could allow a little bit more flexibility on some of the single-family lots that you currently have. Uh, in this case, we're suggesting, uh, making sure you have an open mind about all construction types because modular and manufactured housing, this home on my right, yeah, all, all right, is Clayton Homes, which is just down the road, uh, when you get off the freeway here. So that doesn't look like a manufactured home that I've seen of the past. But just keeping an open mind about more affordable, single-family housing options, if that's really the goal to get those into the market, um, having someone look at what the options are and pursuing that would be beneficial. Another, uh, idea in the same category of single-family home development is, um, I, I didn't mention on the last slide, I'm sorry. In combination with changes to the zoning code, I think y'all could consider looking at design standards as an option to make sure that you get the neighborhood characteristics that you want to see in the housing that gets eventually developed. Um, right now, it's really heavily dependent on lot size, um, a little bit of massing, a little bit of height and setbacks. Uh, but if you want to have the character of the neighborhoods, maybe looking at actual design standards instead of the unit size and the parking and the minimum lot, uh, just thinking about how you could control what is built by the look and the design features. Um, so that's why that's repeated on all three of these slides, because in combination with updating the zoning code, you'd also slip in, okay, we're going to relax this a little bit, but we're going to also have some design standards so that when you come in, you still have to build to the scale of the neighborhood. But we might allow you to have two units, or we might allow you to not have to build parking, or we might allow you to have, um, a smaller minimum lot. Um, I'll also, I'll also mention on the right side here is, I can't take credit for this, this is from a different planning firm called Opticos. Uh, missing middle housing, uh, if you haven't heard that term, it was coined probably a decade or so ago. This is that small, low-density, uh, scale housing that is perfect for infill development, if you have the right-sized lots. Uh, the graphic here shows it as sandwiched between a single-family housing, a neighborhood, and a mid-rise neighborhood. Um, just to, to make an impact, to let you know like what that looks like and how the scale works. But in practice, what this really looks like is a single-family, uh, neighborhood has these pockets of vacancy and you're allowed to build a duplex, like the one on the left here, which is from Hammond. I don't know the address, but I did pull that off of a real estate page. But it's a duplex and it looks like a single-family home, so it's at scale. But again, if you have design standards and if you wanted that to look different, then you could dictate that. Uh, and the last one in this category is just thinking about accessory, uh, detached accessory dwelling units. I don't believe the code speaks directly to this, we couldn't tell. Uh, I think, uh, being open-minded about what that could look like and how, where those could be placed, uh, first in the enhancement areas perhaps, uh, but also near your university in those neighborhoods where they're probably having a little bit of a housing pinch and people crowding into smaller homes, and, um, I know, I know that that probably has been an issue. We have a case study in the report about what New Orleans is doing near the universities, um, and I think it would be a good one to read through. It's short, about how they're trying to manage it through parking requirements, um, which I think could end up being, um, have negative consequences in other ways. So the, there's more than one way to skin the cat here, right? I mean, these are not, like I said, not prescriptive, these are ideas to give you direction, how to think about outside the box and, and possibly, um, think of new ideas. Uh, another area that we were asked to focus on, and one of the city's goals, is how do we address low-income homeowners that already are here, and then the home buyers that want to break into the market? Uh, so a really, uh, I, I don't want to say simple, but one that we see very common is, you know, mortgage and down payment assistance. I personally worked on a mortgage and down payment assistance in New Orleans. Um, in these kind of programs, there's a subsidy that usually comes from federal government, um, either passed through the, from the feds directly to the city or through the state. Um, it's a, usually called a soft second loan or some sort of grant for down payment. And you put a lien on the property for a certain amount of time, and if the person moves before that time is up, then they pay back a portion of the grant. Um, so it's encouraging people who want to move and stay, um, it usually has income restrictions. Um, so these folks are able to get a mortgage, but they're not quite able to get enough of a mortgage to purchase the home. So that's where it's called a soft second, comes in to back up the first.
Can I ask questions?
Please. So I, I've heard about, you know, we've had, I think our last meeting, we were talking about mobile homes, um, and people were saying, you know, give, give people money for down payment, and I mean, uh, what you're talking about sounds like it could have some potential, but I've heard that we've had some trouble with people having, you know, the credit that's needed in order to get the mortgage and, are those kinds of programs dependent on, I imagine they are, right, you're getting a mortgage, so you're still. You're getting a mortgage, so you're still, mortgage, you're still dependent on the credit and the ability for people to pay. Do you have any idea how people address that? Where the pool of people who need assistance is large, but the, they may not be meeting the standards?
You still have to meet the traditional banking standards to get the first mortgage. And I think that's not necessarily a bad thing, it's just, you might be credit-worthy, but you just don't have enough money. The median household income that we put in the report in the demographics section is $31,250. So, you, it's hard to buy a house on that. Or you really have to, I did a back-of-the-embalo calculations, and it looks like it's around $70,000 at least that you have to make to get a first mortgage for a $210,000 home. So to answer your question though, sorry, you, you address it by understanding that there is a buyer pool that fits those folks that want to get into the market, they have good enough credit, they just can't afford the typical traditional mortgage, first mortgage. So that's the folks that you're helping. And if I didn't already say it, these, a lot of these recommendations, none of them are the silver bullet that solve all the problems, right? So this is just one way to get that segment of the homebuyer into the market. There's other mortgage assistance programs that I've heard and seen work well, where they have housing counseling tied to it. If you do that, it's, that's great, because then you're hitting a whole other buyer pool, but it takes longer, because folks need six to 12 months to get through a credit program, credit financing program. But, but that is an option, and it's ways to, it's supportive services to get folks into it. What I don't like to see happen is to have jurisdictions or entities give away a home and for very, very little money, and have no backup or financial fitness for the upkeep, the insurance, and the little bit of mortgage there is. So balancing that out and being careful with that.
Everything that we have done in the past has always been tied to the homebuyer education classes and the financial fitness classes. Our biggest problem, as you stated, was the credit score. We had a ton of people complete both of those counseling support services, and then they could not close the deal. We only had two homes close, I think maybe even one finally closed. And it could have been that time of the market, it could have been, you know, it was several years ago. There may be more people available now that we could look at again. What we've mainly done is continue to refer people to the United Way that has some mortgage assistance programs, and has kind of a set up your savings, and you contribute, and they contribute at the same time during that timeframe. But those are all things that we can look at again.
Yeah, and definitely keep those lessons learned somewhere, that when the conversation does happen again, and we're going to get to a point where, remind me to bring this up, but having a city champion and someone that's advocating for this, and then knows that, has institutional knowledge, whether or not they were here or not, of like, what were the challenges, what were the problems? Because you can address that, but you need to set expectations, first of all, that it takes longer, and that you're a smaller community, what I was talking about. So New Orleans is going to have a bigger buyer pool, so your, our pool will be smaller, and the expectation might not be to sell 50 homes in a year. It's going to be a lot smaller than that. The other thing I'll mention, because we're talking about it, and I don't want to forget when I get to it, but I'll, I'll be talking about recommendations for those properties that are eventually going to be city site control, is you, I've seen jurisdictions team up with developers and say, hey, if you build this type of housing, this size, these design standards, on these scattered sites in this census block group or this enhancement area, I will guarantee you that these soft second will be set aside for buyers, for you. So the, now you've got the developer doing the work, or their agent doing the work to find the buyer, and they trust that they can just send the buyer to the city or the nonprofit to get the money. And so, it's leveraging both people's expertise, because that's the other problem, like getting out there and getting the word out, that's not what cities are built to do. They don't have a real estate agent, so partnering with the right people really helps. Sorry, I got sidetracked, I can go on and on about soft second programs. The other thing I did want to mention, I don't want to leave this slide without mentioning, is that you, I know you all have done a rehab program, so if that was of some interest, I would say the same exact things that I said just now, just setting expectations for the time that it takes to find the eligible folks. And then, I know right now, I think the grants department is sending folks to the USDA, which is great, finding out what that program doesn't cover, or if there's a way to leverage that program, if it's not providing enough funding to do the improvements, is there some way that the city could chip in and do a little bit more? But again, that takes a little bit of work and finagling and figuring out if the two sources can actually go together. This is the last slide on recommendations, but this is the one where I was just talking about, for those properties that might eventually come under city site control in that redevelopment disposition approach, I think it would be, if that was of interest to the city, I think it would be in your interest to consider a partner land bank or redevelopment authority that would be your partner in acquisition, maintenance, and disposition. Because I think those types of entities, they're quasi-governmental, they're set up differently, they can, they can streamline a lot of those processes a little bit easier, and I can't speak to the details on that. I'm sure maybe your city attorney or somebody that can look at this closer, but cities usually have a harder time acquiring, having site control, and then disposing the property. There's a lot of notifications and bidding that has to happen usually, to sell the property back out on the market, to avoid corruption and that sort of thing. So considering what partner agencies might help you with doing a land bank style and disposition program would be helpful. And one of the disposition programs that might come to fruition, if you all went down this road, is a lot next door program. It's exactly what it sounds like, you have vacant properties. If the city or a partner had control of those vacant properties, they could then solicit the next-door neighbors, assuming that they're eligible, and it's up to you what makes an eligible property owner next door, but typically, it's an owner-occupied property, it's someone that's not back in taxes, and don't have any blight liens or anything. You could have a requirement that they have to have lived there at least five years, whatever the case may be, whatever is important to you. But you offer these vacant properties at a discounted rate or almost free to get them in the hands of someone that will take care of them, and they either build an ADU, or they just expand their yard, and they take care of it, and it's not, it's not a blight. And then also, I just, real quick, the housing and community development grants, those are an obvious thing, but you have a grants department that is really knowledgeable in what's out there, so use them and get them involved earlier rather than later. I was, I was a little disappointed, I didn't reach out to them sooner. I wasn't, I didn't make the connection that that's what they were doing. So, even in this case, I would have loved to have been introduced to the grants department, like in April when we first started. And that's on me, I should have reached out, but I just didn't, I didn't make the connection. So, use that, leverage that department, go to them whenever there's housing and community development things on the docket or on your mind. And then in the improvement incentives and the conservation category, those properties, a couple of recommendations there, the abandoned vehicles and illegal dumping. I understand you all have had ordinances presented on that, and you are considering it all the time. I think that's something to keep fresh on your mind and keep considering, because that's something that can get out of control easily, and you want to find something that works, so you can address that. We do have a recommendation in there, but again, not prescriptive, just trying to give you some direction. And then lastly, a green infrastructure program, that could be technical assistance, or it could be a subsidy that gives people a little bit of money to improve the, their property, on their property, so single-family housing property could do rain gardens, just drainage improvements, and in areas where you might have localized flooding, nuisance flooding, this would be really important and helpful if you got a lot of neighbors engaged and involved to do it, because you actually see a big difference. And again, I know, I live in New Orleans, and I used to work for New Orleans Redevelopment Authority, so I'm familiar with some of their programs, and they have a pretty robust green infrastructure program in one of the neighborhoods that floods a lot, and it's really successful. So there's, there's places real close that, that you can look to if you, if you need to get inspiration or ideas. This is recommendations, but these are the low-hanging fruit, really short-term, quick next steps, recommendations. I really, if you walk away with nothing else, I think assigning and designating someone that either is already on staff, or if it's a new hire, whatever, is a champion, an advocate for this study and for the workforce housing study that you all did a few years back. Look at those recommendations, which ones do you like, which ones are going to work, and this person or this department takes that and is the advocate and is the champion, and makes sure, makes sure that this doesn't end up on a shelf, and that the ideas that you like get bubbled up and actually can be utilized. I think you all are hiring a city planner, or maybe you already did, I think that would be really important, you need that. Community development director, something to consider, a lot of cities have that. Usually what we see is that director is in charge of multiple departments, this helps with cross-collaboration and coordination, and again, that might be a perfect city champion for housing and blight remediation. And then lastly, the Housing Committee, I think that was a really great move to create that. These are like your ambassadors out in the city, they could continue on with their work, you could have them help you with community engagements and doing action plans and prioritizing the city goals or the challenges and the recommendations. And that's it. Sorry, I started talking fast, because I know that was taking a while. Any questions from anyone?
Can you explain the community development director, what that person, what does that, what does that mean?
Yeah, well, again, not prescriptive, it's whatever you want it to be, but typically what I've seen is like they would be in charge of a housing department if you had one, they might be over the planning department, they might be over the grants department, you could do all three, and it's someone to just make sure all those departments, I'm just thinking of what Hammond has, making sure that those departments are working together and in tandem. Code enforcement would fall under that, because all of these interplay together, right? One can't do their job without the other one really being consistent with what they're doing, or else it's just kind of a hodgepodge and it's a mess. So, it's, it's really a champion for making sure you're collaborating.
You have a lot of good recommendations on here, I read through, there's several of them that I'd like to see, you know, we kind of do something with, and I appreciate some of these suggestions and all this time you put into it. The code enforcement, automated administrative function, code enforcement and creative public database of code violations, do they use that in other cities that you've seen nearby us, or?
When you say automated, I have not seen like the code liens being paid online, I think you and I may have talked about that at one time, but the city of New Orleans has a website where you can go look up who has the code violation and what it's for. If it's for grass cutting, it's for broken windows or whatever. You can also make a report online to submit issues that you see. So, and then it's, it's just a really nice way, also, I'm sure on their side, I didn't work in the code enforcement department, so I don't know, but they can run reports easily, right? And you can just like spit out a report and be like, where's most of our code enforcement violations happening? Or who owes money, or, you know, who's our repeat offenders? I mean, that's kind of the, the big advantage of having the technology behind you, because then you can, you can get real data in real time and quickly.
Yeah. Thank you, yeah.
I think that's a great idea.
Well, I owe you a hard copy, and we'll probably get that to you by the end of tomorrow. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lois.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Lois, for that presentation. Now that the study's been completed, I'm asking if this completes the task that the, if this completes the task that was asked of the citizens of Hammond, volunteers that served on this committee? Just complete this?
Yeah, I mean, I think it does. They have a recommendation in here about maybe, you know, we may need to look at possibly if there's interest, the majority of keeping some kind of group-together committee of some sort, maybe, and I'd have to get with Andre about that, 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 you know, if that's where the will of everyone wants to go, to kind of continue looking at this report and maybe trying to do something with it. And I think the committee, you know, moving forward, maybe keeping it together for however how long, or may need to reorganize it or reevaluate the size, or, or, you know, the actual goals that we're looking for, I think would, would help. I mean, I've done a good job, great job, and we have this now, and so, it's kind of like anything, if you kind of just, you know, end it, forget about it, may kind of get lost in the, in, you know, on the shelf, like Lois said, and really not get anything done. So, I know that has to do with, you know, some of the council as well, to look at if the majority want to do anything with some of these recommendations or not, administration, and, and you know, so I think it would maybe helpful if somewhat of the committee would extend some time, but when do y'all expire, actually? I mean, is it already expired, or?
I think the ordinance was kind of directed at this, so I think they'd have to go back and look at that, and...
I know we extended, I think it was for a year, then we extended it another year, or was?
I don't remember the extension period, but I think it was, I don't remember.
Yeah, I remember.
I think it was for another 90 days, just to kind of let them finish up, because it was trying to get done by December 31st, excuse me.
Yeah.
But we didn't quite get done, so I think it was extended another 90 days, but whatever it is. But if so, I'd like to thank all of our volunteers that gave their time and input on this project, some of them are here tonight, Karen and Tony, and I just thank you guys for allowing us to be a part of this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think there's a lot to go on with the, with the study. I think, I love the recommendations of things to do, but it also has pointed to a lot of spots that are, really need to be addressed, a city planner, we need some updates to the UDC. I think a lot of it is outside what the committee can do, because we need to kick some of this. Ron, to your group over there at planning and zoning, and, you know, the political will of the administration and the city council on some of these really great ideas, but I don't, I don't know how we go forward with it without a champion, right? Or a city planner, or the planning and zoning really giving us some substantive things, because this is not our area of expertise. But I think it's great. Lois, thank you for, I've tuned into a lot of your meetings, and it was helpful to follow the process, and it was, you guys worked very hard, so thank you. And then Joe, and the rest of the committee, Karen and Tony, thank y'all for volunteering your time, it means a lot to the city.
And there were definitely a lot of highlights in here that, you know, we definitely need to, I think, look at and address, so however that may be, we may need to have a meeting or something regarding this to see how we want to go forward, but definitely shows some, some highlights of improvements that need to be made, and, and so, I'm glad that, glad that we have it, and I'm impressed with the report, so, thank you.
Thank you, Lois and the entire team. I think it's fantastic, a lot of information, and it would be sad for us not to do something with all of this. And I do think we need to take a little time and digest this information, and then get on a calendar, Lacy, we need to schedule a time we can maybe come back together, I don't know, in one of our joint sessions or whatever, but whatever it may be, we just need to pick up from where we are right now and, and wrap our arms around some of these recommendations, if not all of them, and see how we can implement them the most efficient way. So, thanks.
Yeah, I totally agree with that. That way we could break it down to different, to different groups, they'd be able to look at their part of the report, that way we know how to put it all together, see what we need to start, where first, breaking up, excuse me, and break it all down from there. Again, at this time, I'd like to thank the committee for volunteering your time, and I hope and pray, is my prayer, that once we get everything back together, if you guys take a little break, you might be able to come back and help, help us navigate through some of the proposals that were made here tonight. Anyone else have anything on this? Lacy, Mara, anyone?
I think the only issue we've had in the past, and Andre needs to clear up or figure out, or, we've watched New Orleans for a long time do it, and not really sure how they're giving clear title to folks. It's through the insurance policy that has been given out there, so, we've had people, we, actually, I know of one right now that's a next-door neighbor of a lot, he's been taking care of him, would love to own it. So, you know, how do we get the clear title to these folks? And we can start moving along, I think that's one of the biggest obstacles we've had.
Yeah, and I'd recommend you talk with Civic Source, who's now charged with the enforcement of taxes, a lot of these are tax properties that have been adjudicated.
And that's through an insurance policy.
Well, Civic Source, what happens is Civic Source will give an owner a title insurance policy, except it's limited, and that's really for the body... policy, except it's limited, and that's really for the buyer to make a decision on what risk they're willing to take, because there are certain risks that you take when you buy property that have been adjudicated for taxes. But I'd recommend, Mayor, identify those properties that have been adjudicated, get with Civic Source, they've got a program to, to market those properties, to sell those properties, and they're the ones that issue title insurance. But it becomes the property being valuable enough, and the price being low enough for the buyer to take that risk of ownership. And, and, and I would again, refer that back to Civic Source for that, that effort.
And I think there's a lot on this, these recommendations, besides just adjudicated properties, that, that can really help a whole throughout the city. I mean, that is a fraction of it, but the abandoned cars and, and code enforcement, automated, more technology systems, I think would help out, the design of the builds in certain areas, that if we want to kind of have more of an overlay or more of a, a design that, that we require in certain areas, that we're trying to bring back to life, that all kind of would help out everything. There'd probably be more people wanting to buy the adjudicated properties as well, too, if we started kind of improving the, you know, cars, abandoned vehicles, and different code enforcement infractions, so.
Cars and abandoned vehicles are easy enough, we tow them off, we lean the property. Grass gets high, we clean it up, we lean the property. It's just a matter of, if it's the gentleman I'm thinking about that just wants the property, okay, it's an easy fix for him. The insurance policy doesn't need to be high, he's not building anything on it. Once you start investing 60, 75, 80, $100,000, then it gets scary for the person that's buying or developing the property. So hopefully we can get past that and find a positive way to move forward.
Andre, I think you had worked on an updated abandoned vehicle ordinance as well, maybe recirculate that so we can have it fresh and take, take another look at that.
Anyone else on, on this, on the presentation? Again, thank you for the presentation, Lois, and thank you, excuse me, the housing committee that worked on it, thank you again. Okay, we're down to our reports. Mayor?
We had a great Mardi Gras parade, safe, family-oriented, family fun-filled night, very thankful of that, a lot of police presence, everyone out doing their jobs, so, successful event. Mardi Gras is not over, so please be careful if you go down to other cities with your family, and have a safe weekend. It's a great time, enjoy your family in, in Mardi Gras.
Council reports?
I'm good, just happy Valentine's Day to everyone.
Happy Valentine's Day. Two quick questions, one for the council. Our next meeting, we'll be having the Will Bedanyfield Award. I put the cart in front of the horse, as they say, and start working on it already.
You go ahead, Kep.
So I just wanted to get everybody's approval on it to keep moving forward.
Yes, please.
Sounds good.
All right. My next question is, with food trucks, am I correct, we don't have an ordinance for that at all, right?
That's correct. That's another one that he worked on.
Right.
How about you circulate both of those this week?
Okay, yeah, that'd be great, because I had a call about someone on their property that had a food truck, and law enforcement went over there and stopped them, and my response to them was, there was no ordinance on the book that said you couldn't or you can't. So that was kind of confusing to me, so I would like to go ahead and get something on the record where we could clear that up, because I know in certain areas, some people have food trucks and they're operating them, so.
I will recirculate the, the food truck ordinance.
Okay, all right. Could I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.